Let's make this way to order Madam Quirk you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, everyone have their agenda and follow them? Is that the revised one?
Yes.
Okay. Village of Spring Valley Board of Trustees' agenda dated December 12, 2011. It's about eight o'clock PM. Madam Quirk, would you please call the board?
Trustee Gross.
Yeah.
Trustee Zoham.
Yeah.
Trustee Leeah. Deputy Mayor Desmond.
Yeah.
Mayor Desmond.
Here. Pleasure of the business will be led by trustee Dolan and exposition by trustee Desmar.
I pray for the reasons to reply.
Please remain standing.
Thank you, Lord, to give us the opportunity to be on the great board, to conduct business for the best interest of the community. Give us the strength, the courage, the humility. Give us the wisdom and guide us so our decision that we'll take tonight will be in the best interest of the community ever.
All right. Thank you. Item number three, approval of minutes. I would enter the motion to move October 11, 25th, and November 3rd. I would enter the motion to move it. Move by trustee Gross. Second by me, all in favor, all opposed, it carries. Item number four, mayor's report. I will lay that aside. Number five, public participation. I would enter the motion to remove the public portion.
So move the public.
Move by Deputy Mayor Desmar. Second by trustee Gross, all in favor. Now the public portion is open. If anyone would like to address the Board of Trustees', you may do so at this time.
I'm here, Mr. Julie Thompson. And we thank you very much for bringing these services in. And we...
The address?
The address of our business is 23 North Main Street, 2000 New York, 10977. And I would like to say to the Board of Trustees and to the mayor that I read in your agenda for tonight that you had given to us $2,000 for us to help us with our debt that is behind. And as I explained to you last night, we are approximately five months behind and we owe you a little more money if we can. We do appreciate it, which is given to us. But if you can give us one month yet that will come tremendously in the amount of credit, it's $37,000. So I'm asking you as a former mayor if you can just help us a little bit more because we have children in the center and we're working diligently with them. And you cannot reason there are many things in tax products by just being cut. And we do need a little more help. This is it. Thank you.
Ms. Thompson, I have one question for you. Do you have a supporting document stating that your monthly rent is $27,000? Yeah. Do you have that?
I'm going to have...
Yes.
The document with you?
Yeah.
I brought it last night. I had it in my... I need that because I'm rushing, but I do have the documentation.
Showing that your monthly rent is $27,000. Okay, like probably the list that you signed up with them? The rental?
The rental. We are the manager. You, a person that's managing the agency, he's the one that's collecting the rent now and he sends it out. You know, it's a nice detailed deal for us.
Thank you.
Would I like to make a copy of it?
Yes, please. All right. Thank you.
I would ask for the board to consider that. We do have some documents. Basically, I want the board to consider that. We have one more. We have one more that is to move up for those cases.
So where is the document?
To support that.
No, no, the document you have is a 501(c)(3) document. Yeah, that's what that... Yeah, that's what it is. Thank you.
So I do...
Anyone else? We're going to support it, but we need the document. Okay. All right, thank you. Anyone else? Hearing on... I would enter the motion to close the public portion. Move by Deputy Mayor Desmar. Second by trustee Gross. All in favor, all opposed, it carries. The public portion is closed now. Item number six, personnel. Six A, approve the resignation of Mandy Allen Anderson, consultant with the Village of Spring Valley Justice Court, effective December 29, 2011. I would enter the motion to move it. Move by Deputy Mayor Desmar. Second by trustee Gross, all in favor. All opposed, it carries. I don't have a pen with me. Thank you. Item number six, B, accept fire department membership report dated December 7 and 6, 2011, as follows. Felix Lamare resigned from Spring Valley Hook and Ladders. Emerson J. Moschio accepted Colombian fire engine code number one. Robert Poole Jr. resigned Colombian fire engine code number one. I would enter the motion to move those two. Move by Deputy Mayor Desmar. Second by trustee Gross, all in favor, all opposed, it carries. Item number seven, village clerk. Seven A, approve payment for Mr. Lapland. So we're going to do both seven A and B. Invoice number 11222011-2. I would enter the motion to move both. Move by Deputy Mayor Desmar. Second by trustee Gross, all in favor. All opposed, it carries. Item number seven, C, approve the request from the village clerk to attend the Wacon County Village Clowns and Finance Officers Association meeting dated December 13, 2011. I would enter the motion to move it. Move by trustee Gross, second by Deputy Mayor Desmar. All in favor. All opposed, it carries. That's two abstentions, David.
I'll abstain, Madam Mayor.
I said, "That's two."
That's right. So many cleave, why you not hear that?
Okay, that's two abstentions. The motion is carried. The motion is carried.
I'll abstain, Madam.
If we heard you...
Lord, clear.
No, I have to because I'm... I'm listening. I'm sick and tired of this behavior. When Judge Allen was here, every dog pulled their tail under their belt. Don't get this on me. All right. So let's... Excuse me. So let's move on. Let's move on. Village clerk, continue. Item number T, grant permission for the village clerk to attend the local government records management improvement funds grants 2012-2013 seminar, December 14, in the town of Clarkstown, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at locos for the seminar. I will enter the motion to move it. Move by Deputy Mayor Desmar. Second by trustee Gross, all in favor. All opposed, it carries. We have one... We have one abstention. I'm saying... Listen.
Jesus Christ. If you're going to conduct the board...
Let me say this. Let me say this to... Let me say this to all of you. Let me say this to all of you. I'm resigning. I don't need help.
You can only know how to resign, but...
I know how to resign. And you have to understand how to conduct yourself.
You call the board when somebody is...
You should un... You should know how to conduct yourself.
He's not calling you.
Okay? Okay, you're out of order. You're out of order.
No, no, you're out of order. You don't even know what out of order that means. Okay? I'll abstain, you know that. I'll abstain because I wouldn't know for the truth to be out. It's an out of duty. And you can't... For all these years.
This one.
Seven, seven E. Approve the request from the village clerk. Hold on.
Many cleave, we're fucking... I'll abstain to that.
I need to sit down. Would you put it there?
Go ahead. You have the floor.
Okay. Trustee Leeah. Madam Mayor, it's a regular board meeting. It is true when somebody abstains, you have to call the board to go through, to make sure you know how many people that votes. You don't need to go out of... Even if we have anger, we matter against one another for whatever reason it is. But now we are doing a board meetings, for God's sake. Let's... Please, let's do it right. If somebody abstains, you call the board. It's the same thing. You call the board and then four vote, three vote.
Trustee...
You don't have to be banging.
Trustee, trust... Hold on.
You give me the floor.
Okay, go ahead.
You don't have to bang. You don't have to do anything. They all... We are going up here. Now, people can be upset as much as they want. These people here, it's four years. As the presider of the meetings, there's a conduct... There's a way to conduct the meeting. People can get mad, but you cannot get mad. Please, you cannot... Trust me, you cannot get mad. You have to resign to finish the meeting. So let's finish the meeting instead of arguing and fighting. The trustee has his right. You have your right. Please.
Thank you. Let me... Let me make it clear to you. When you have three votes, it carries.
I know that.
Oh, excuse me. You have the floor. Let me speak. It carries. You have two abstentions and three votes, it carries. Please, and I always say to people, "Please, make sure you learn." Thank you. Let's move on. Item number seven, seven E, approve the request from the village clerk to refund a... Hold on. Citizen for Reverend Jack Michelle, Sherry Eisenpress, Tony Earl, friends of Dana Alexson, Alan Simon, and friends of Judge Edelson for the amount of $100 for political side deposit. I would enter the motion to move it. Move by Deputy Mayor Desmar. Second by trustee Gross, all in favor. All opposed, it carries. Item number eight, village treasurer. Eight A and eight B, approve of abstract and postulate. Trustee Dolan, would you please carry?
Not moving it.
Yeah, okay. Trustee Gross, you have it? All right, thank you. You have it?
Yeah, give me a minute. Which one, general abstract? And a postulate?
Yeah.
There's 27, eight and 27. 27, take mine.
We've got a date of December 13, general abstract number 211/27. The amount is $173,000, $121,009. Claim number 56022657 to 56022703. Then we have postulate, general abstract number 211/11. The amount is $648,000 and $744,33. Claim number 56022643 to 56022656. This one is just a add-on, right? 27A? Then we have the same thing, December 13, 2011, general abstract number 211/278. Amount is $81,000 and $16,200. Claim number is 560TB714 to 56022716. Then we have the same... Then we have the capital abstract, 211/C58. The amount is $7,074,33. It's a claim number 56022766. And we have postulate, general abstract 211/118. Amount is $2,758,77. Claim number 56022760 to 56022760. I will enter the motion to move it.
Both abstract and postulate by trustee Gross. Second by Deputy Desmar. All in favor. We have one abstention. It carries. Item number nine, community development and housing. Nine A, approve the request from even insult to attend the local government reports management improvement fund grant application information seminar 2012 and 13, December 14, 2011, at the town of Clarkstown, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at locos for the seminar. I would enter the motion to move it. Move by Deputy Mayor Desmar. Second by trustee Gross, all in favor. All opposed, it carries. Item number 10, police department. Ten A, approve the request from the police department to allow college student to participate in the police ride along program. All kids that are signed up for that, they have their waivers. It's in the packet. I would enter the motion to move it. Move by Deputy Mayor Desmar. Second by trustee Gross, all in favor. All opposed, it carries. Item number 10B, approve the request from the police department to deny liquor license for Ellen Cleone located at 10 South Main Street, Spring Valley, New York. I would enter the motion to move it. Move by Deputy Mayor Desmar. Second by trustee Gross, all in favor. All opposed, it carries. Item number 10C, approve the request from the police department to grant liquor license for Latin style restaurant located at 2, located at 288 North Main Street, Spring Valley, New York. I would enter the motion to move it. By Deputy Mayor Desmar. Second by trustee Gross, all in favor. All opposed, it carries. Item number 10D, approve the request from the police department to accept the New York State buckle of New York seatbelt enforcement grant in the amount of $4,650. Move by Deputy Mayor Desmar. Second by trustee Gross, all in favor. All opposed, it carries. Item number 10E, approve the request from the police department to accept the state grant from the New York State Governor's Traffic Safety Committee in the amount of $4,680. I would enter the motion to move it. Move by Deputy Mayor Desmar. Second by trustee Gross, all in favor. All opposed, it carries. Item number 10F, grant permission to Spring Valley Police Department to replenish detective practice log base fuel in the amount of $1,000, $1,000, which will be fully reimbursed by the U.S. Marshal Service. Move by Deputy Mayor Desmar. Second by trustee Gross, all in favor. All opposed, it carries. Continue, police department. Number 10G, approve the request from the chief of police department to have one officer assigned to the United States Department of Justice Drug Enforcement Administration. I would enter the motion to move it. Move by trustee Gross. Second by Deputy Mayor Desmar. All in favor. All opposed, it carries. Item number 10H, Village of Spring Valley Police Department. Approve of general orders. Deputy wasn't here, so if you have it, please review it. So we're trying to move to be accredited by the state. I think it's a good thing for us to do. So... I would enter the motion to move... Move by trustee Gross. Second by Deputy Mayor Desmar. All in favor. All opposed, it carries. Item number 11A, assessors. Approve the request from the village assessor to attend a soft consulting associate conference, December 13, 2011, at 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at locos. To the conference reimbursement, they be requested for travel and expenses. Move by Deputy Mayor Desmar. Second by trustee Gross, all in favor. All opposed, it carries. Item number 11B, since we have some issues with the tax sharing taxes, so we need to move on. So since you weren't here, Deputy Mayor, so what is your pleasure in that I'm asking?
Why don't you hold it for next meeting?
You... You can hold it?
Yeah.
Okay, so you need to review because you weren't here? Okay. So I would pull that request by Deputy Mayor Desmar. Item number 12, department... Legal department, 12A, approve the request from the village attorney to accept the intermunicipal garbage bulk item and recyclable materials collection agreement with the Wacon County Solid Waste Management Authority, dated January 1, 2012. I would enter the motion to move it. Move by Deputy Mayor Desmar. Second by trustee Gross, all in favor. All opposed, it carries. Item number 12B, approve the request from the legal department to provide defense and identify police officers and federal lawsuits. So we discussed that last night. So I would enter the motion to move it. Move by you trustee Gross. Second by Deputy Mayor Desmar. All in favor. All opposed, it carries. Item number 14C, approve the request from the village of Spring Valley to purchase from the county of Wacon, 13 to 13... 11 to 13, Lafayette Street, at the amount of $2,0300 and $300 per parcel now. So we have the parcel numbers. Can we enter it for the record? Because I want to be clear on that one. You want to make a clear mistake.
Did you turn for the section one, or...
Yeah. Did you have a copy, trustee?
I had a copy, but I don't manage it. You guys before, I had glasses.
So...
And you're doing a copy, yeah?
Yeah, no. For the subject you... So we have that.
Yeah, you can wait this. I can tell you this. I can tell, Lavalas with my glasses. You got three for that, to go on? No?
Okay, so no, I was looking for a deputy trustee. What's... We have it. You have it?
I don't think it's in there.
Or a lat number.
Lat numbers, yes.
You have the section one.
It's in the memo.
It's not in the box.
Madam Quirk, it's in the memo that you sent.
Okay, so I would move by that. You can find it in the... You have it? Yeah. Okay. What did you read, trustee?
We have section 57, dot 40, dash 1, dash 44. We have... We have six. Does it make sense?
Yes.
Then we have 57, dot 40, dash 1, dash 44.1. 57.40, dash 1, 44.2. 57.40, dash 1, dash 44.3. Then we have 57.40, dash 1, dash 44.4. 57.40, dash 1, dash 44.5. It's a total of three lots, correct?
Yes, three lots. I would enter the motion to move it. Move by Deputy Mayor Desmar. Second by trustee Gross. All in favor. All opposed, it carries. Item number 13, trustees report. 13A, community development, trustee Leeah. 13B, fire and safety, trustee Gross.
Mayor, the report I'm having with the police department is releasing press report next week. The job that they did the past nine months. They did a great rate and they took over about 20 or 25 guns from the street. They seized about 100 strong dollars cash. They seized about, I think it was about 20 or 25 pounds of marijuana. And what else did they have?
Other drugs.
Other drugs and prescription drugs. They have a value of almost half a million dollars. And they still don't want to take over the bad people on the street. So people who are doing bad things, it's wrong, maybe, to be...
I'm glad you said that, trustee. And I would like to extend my thanks to the police department once again for a great job. And thanks to the trustee, the way they are, they're with us with their own eyes to see what's going on. So we need the support of the board to support the police department. They can continue to do the great job that they are doing still. Thank you. 13C, infrastructure, trustee Dolan?
No.
13D, I know you were out, Deputy Mayor. Please, there was no report?
Okay.
Item number 14, unfinished business. 14A, approve the appointment of Jacqueline Lavalas to the position of code enforcement officer two, full-time in the building department, effective October 18, 2011, as per the approval of the Wacon County Department of Personnel. I would enter the motion to move it. Move by Deputy Mayor Desmar. Second by trustee Dolan. All in favor? All opposed, it carries.
Do you have the job, sir?
Unfinished business. Item number 14B, approve to purchase a post office parcel parking to enable the developer of Post Office Square to proceed with their project. Open approval. Developer will be holding for the developer to show financial statement for the village board and proceed to the next phase. And also, we have an add-on by trustee Gross. We're going to review. I think at this time, we're going to hear from the developers and we're going to pull this item for further discussion. So maybe we probably have a special meeting with the board or we probably so give you more documents for you to review. So you can address the board with any concern you may have or...
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Evening, Madam Mayor. I'm the attorney for Mr. Weinstein's development this matter. I understand that we're here tonight, hopefully to get the [inaudible] [inaudible] from forward. And receipt of a memo from trustee Gross dated today with some conditions he would like to see met. If you may, I'm going to address those now.
I think it would be best to address it later. And so they... We can... Because not only trustee Gross, but there was some concern last night. I don't want to see the project go down. I want people can all come to an understanding so we can move forward. So I think, you know, if they need time, so just give them another two weeks so we can... We can see what the concerns are and we can address them. So so far, there's one sheet that was provided by trustee Gross. I review some of it so we can have the next board meeting or we can have another meeting, maybe a special meeting. Since there are going to be holidays, you know how it works. So I cannot move the board and call them in a special meeting because it's the end of the year, so people have to do their business. So... So is it okay?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I appreciate your concern and will definitely address it. If you want to take a meeting date, obviously, we'll do our best and Mr. Weinstein it out until first of the year.
Okay.
Of the new year, but...
So we schedule for the next meeting to be on... Madam Quirk, January 12?
Yes, ma'am.
2012?
Excuse me, mayor. Sorry. It's January 10.
10. So that would be feasible for you? That's good? Okay, great. So the workshop, so yeah. So you have to come at the ele... The night, okay. The night?
The night.
The night?
The night.
For the workshop?
The night for workshop.
Okay.
And that may be just one thing I wanted to provide to the board. I know it was requested last night at the workshop meeting for estimates, alternative estimates to Mr. Weinstein's proposal. I'm going to provide to the board. Now, I didn't make multiple copies because again, it was only 24 hours ago.
Give it to the clerk. She can make copies for the board.
Fine. Here's... I only have two as of today. One is Mr. Weinstein's. One is Scafides Caving and Drainage. Who's a minority contractor, whose estimate actually comes out to about $3,000 more than Mr. Weinstein. And I'll get you the third again on short notes. We couldn't get another one. But I'll provide it to the clerk.
Yes, there will be... She'll make copies for the board. Thank you. Okay, I... Item number 14B, Madam Quirk, would you pull for further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Weinstein, David, for coming. Okay, item number 14C, approve the request from the village assessor to refund West Central Latour, eight... Lat 857, 2.46, dash 1, dash 44. 857146, dash 1, dash 1.1. 7.146, dash 1, dash 1, and 46.46, dash 1, dash 44. In the amount of 2,000... 2,000 five... So I...
254...
Seems like I don't want to pay them. 254,390 dollars for over assessment for the tax years 2008, 2011, subject to review by the village treasurer. What we did last night on those two items, so we say we may pass it upon the meeting with Judge... I don't remember the judge's name.
Judge Garvey.
Judge Garvey, so we can further discuss it with the judge. And please, there's other cases we have in the schedule. I suggest that when we go there, so we can discuss those as well. Are we... Are we on board? Okay. And item number C, the request from the village assessor to refund West Central Latour, let's...
Just do this one. Oh. We got to go to next one.
Approve the request.
Item C and D, you want to do the same thing, both?
Okay, so we're going to move it to... I will enter the motion to move it. Move by trustee Gross. Second by Deputy Mayor Desmar. All in favor? All opposed, it carries. Item number 14E, approve of camera contract in the Memorial Park Building, Park 1, for a $7,000 partone.
Let me clarify. $7,500.
Oh, that was 75?
I have the right here. We have to say which company and which part. Can I say that?
Yeah, I said part one. They want to choose one.
Okay, which one you want? I'll answer it. We can do that one. Okay, so the company is given a... You have a bid. I mean, the price is the offer tax security services in tomorrow New York. This job is for... To do the...
The part one?
That's part one to $7,500, with the video, so, so, camera, and the spring valley park is outside.
Okay, great. So, the part two, we can, as you suggested last night, we can move the other part, yes? Okay, perfect. Uh, I will enter the motion to move it. Move by deputy Mayor Desmarets, second by trustee Gross, all in favor. All opposed, it carries. Item number 15, new business, 15A, approve of section eight, approve of abstract, uh, do we have it? Deputy, can you carry that one? Please, I need it.
Village Spring Valley Board Meeting, abstract number five, four, six. Section eight program amendment, claim number five, one, four, two, the amount of $597,000. Claim number five, one, four, three, in the amount of $499,000. Claim number five, one, four, four, in the amount of $30,000. Claim number five, one, four, five, in the amount of $2,668,020. Total section eight program abstract for village board approval, $3,794,020. And I approve this item.
Thank you. Uh, move by deputy Mayor Desmarets, second by trustee Gross, all in favor. All opposed, it carries. Item number 15B, grant permission for Combinator Laker to close off East Church Street for a prayer ritual to commemorate the second anniversary of A-3, January 12, 2012, at 3:30 PM to 5:30 PM. I will enter the motion to move, move by trustee Gross. Second by deputy Mayor Desmarets, all in favor. All opposed, it carries. I approve the request from, uh, Haxo for assistance from the village of Spring Valley, and the amount of $3,000 to support a pilot economy and job development program to begin January 2012.
End the motion.
Hold on. Open submission of the proper documents for this program.
End the motion. End the motion?
I'm moving.
I know it, end the motion. In a second, it, I will speak, that's what I'm...
Okay. Move by, I mean, move, uh, second by trustee Gross.
Um, we had a agree of $4,000, I just wanted to change.
I checked the budget, uh, I don't have that much, we have orders coming, so we have to give a little bit of age.
But I believe, I saw 20, still up there.
No, 20, no, 20.
E, still up to 20,000?
No, 20, we're not gonna do, absolutely not, so we can, no.
Okay, okay, that's what we have, huh?
No, absolutely not.
And the three? The 3,000, that's what we have.
The 3,000, and we have to do something for, uh, this.
Okay.
And we have a, I think, a few coming, so we don't have that much. We have to give every, little bit. Okay, I will enter the motion to move it. Move by deputy Mayor Desmarets, second by trustee Gross, all in favor. All opposed, it carries. Let me say something, uh, before we even disburse the money to any organization, uh, one thing that trustee Leon, uh, suggested, uh, last night. So, we're gonna draft, I'm gonna ask the lawyer to draft an application, uh, for, for you to approve, uh, such item, because we need to have a back of paper for those. All right, so item number 15T, approve the new beginning dignity services, and for assistance in the amount of 2,000.
37.
No, uh, hold on, I, I asked for the paper for 37. So, uh, with, uh, the line, uh, rent for two, 30, North Main Street, open submission of proper documentation, she's gonna do that. So, we, we're about, as soon as I get the paper, we will be, increase it for 37 for that. Okay?
Got it, John?
All right?
Okay.
So, I will enter the motion to move it. Move by a trustee Daron. Second by deputy Mayor Desmarets, all in favor. All opposed, it carries. Item number 15, uh, approve the request from Wac, apostolic, and the amount, uh, I don't know if we, if, I don't, I don't, I don't...
Prove it in the house.
Yes, I don't, uh, so that was requested to, yeah, I can see, uh, requested to pull by trustee Daron and Leon for further, I don't know, discussion? That's what was before?
I know, we don't have a lot of...
All right, so that's cool. So, I think, uh, we don't have any new business, Madam Court? All the items was voted and carried? Thank you. And before we adjourn, so we have a memory of December 13, 2011, for the mayor, Nazarow, uh, 11, 4, 2011, Jackie Wano, running, John, uh, 11, 13, 2011, Victoria Alot, Alway, 11, 13, 2011, Eric Decosta, 11, 20, 2011, Francine Baggio, 11, 20, 2011, Lawrence Johnson Jr., 11, 22, 2011, Esmaena Wanko, 11, 25, 2011, Rose Katz, 12, 4, 2011, Christine West Casica, 12, 4, 2011, Gloria Edwards, 12, um, I believe, I have that date, so it's